Good afternoon, everyone. I'd like to call a meeting to order of the November 15th Board of Commissioners. I would invite you to stand for the invocation led by Commissioner Stanbaugh and followed by the pledge by Commissioner Coleman.
By his pleas, to Heavenly Father, we come before you this evening to ask your blessing on this meeting to watch over us, guide us, strengthen and preserve us. We ask for your wisdom and the knowledge that we need to make the right decisions for the people on behalf of people here in Glen County. Lord, ask you to watch over our first responders, our police, our fire and our military across the world who make it possible for us to enjoy the freedoms, the liberty, the justice and the government we have. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
And with this to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have no public comment tonight and we don't have any presentations or announcements, so we'll get right into public hearings. Establishment, increase of fees. Public hearings will be limited to 30 minutes for each opposing side with five minutes allocated to each individual speaker. Comments are to be limited to relevant information regarding your position and should avoid being repetitious. If your group has a spokesperson, please allow that individual to present your group's position and the time allocated. Your cooperation in this process will be greatly appreciated. Item number one, consider authorizing the Recreation and Parks Department to increase certain fees and charges at Blythe Island Regional Park and restrict monthly rentals from May through September. Increase summer day camp weekly registration fee from $45 to $55 and add the Sunset Pool admission fee at Neptune Park Pool. Brunswick Aquatic Center, Howard Coffin Park and Selden Park effective 2019. Ms. Curganis, thank you.
Good evening Commissioners. Thank you for your time this evening. Yes, sir. So, in the past couple of months, we've been looking at a variety of fees in our department, as you know. And so tonight what we're bringing forward to you are our recommendations related to Blythe Island Regional Park campground and pavilion rental fees, Howard Coffin Park summer day camp fees and then some daily admission fees at the county pools. We'll first start with Blythe Island Regional Park. Our current fees are on the top line of the table that's on the screen there with our primitive tent fee being $15 plus tax per day. The RV daily price being $36 plus tax per day, oh excuse me, yeah, per day. The weekly price for RVs is $216 plus tax and then the monthly rate to be out there is $450 plus tax. The line below that is what we are recommending this evening, but skipping down to the third, fourth and fifth lines of the chart, we have compared our fees with some of the local campgrounds in this area. And so our recommendations for some increases which have not been made since 2015 was the last increase is we'd like to, your consideration to increase the primitive tent cost to $19 per night plus tax. The daily RV rate, $40 plus tax. The weekly RV rate at $225 plus tax and then the RV monthly price at $600 plus tax. And as you can see from this chart, again, we feel like our fees are very competitive with other places in the area and plus we feel like our hidden jewel of Blythe Island Regional Park and the campground and the services and the things that they get at the park are beyond none. So, we feel like we do a good job and the people would get a good value even though it does look like a large increase. One of the things that we are asking for your approval to consider this evening is also restricting the monthly rentals between our, in our peak season. We feel like we can, we have enough visitors and guests that come there that if we restrict those and not allow continued and consecutive monthly rentals, that the revenue that would be, because we're kind of losing revenue from that. So, having more weekly opportunities and weekly sites available during our peak season, we feel like would help increase the revenues that we generate at that park. So, do y'all have any questions about the fees?
Could you say that again, what you just said?
Okay. Well, when you restrict, the monthly rentals being $600 is obviously a better rate than the $225 that we would charge for weekly. So, if you have more weekly rentals, your revenue is increased and we do have a lot of demand for weekly rentals during our peak season. So, that's why we are asking for your consideration to restrict the monthly rentals. People could still rent for a month at a time, but they could not rent for the consecutive months, you know, the six month consecutive period during the peak season. They still would be able to rent for those consecutive months in the off-season which are, is more like October through April. And that would allow us to sell more weekly rentals for the RVs and be able to generate a little more revenue. That we would allow monthly rentals, but we wouldn't allow consecutive monthly rentals. So, if somebody could come in for the month of July, but they wouldn't be able to stay through August and into December as they can now. They could rent for a month at a time. They could skip a month and come back for a month. Yes, sir. To just allow us to have more spaces for weekly rentals, which is in higher demand in the peak season.
But that's only May through September?
Yes, sir.
Just for those four months?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Moving on to some of the other fees that we've looked at.
Quick question.
How does the, yeah, some of us are slow. The monthly rental rates, you said you compared it to other RV parks. How do these now compare to them with the increases you're proposing? Are we still below?
We are still below. The monthly price is $650 at Coastal Georgia RV. It's, we'd be a little bit above the Golden Isles Campground, which is $500 to $575. And then the Jekyll Island Campground, they have varying rates at different times of the year for their monthlies. We feel like we'd be, still be very competitive in the area.
We should be. We have a nice park that goes along with the spot.
Yes, yes, sir, we do. Yes, sir.
Didn't we just increase our spaces out there too?
No, sir, we've not done that yet. We've got, still got the 97 RV sites. We did add 24 primitive sites within the past year, year and a half. Dawn maybe can correct me if I'm wrong, but it was before I arrived. But, so those have been added and they do generate a lot of the revenue from the tent, the tents that come out there.
Okay, the primitive sites are what was added?
Yes, sir, the primitive sites. And there's, there's been discussions over the last couple of years of the possibility of adding up to maybe 51 additional RV sites, but that's a future plan that we've been discussing for a couple of years and hope to, you know, maybe one day expand the RV sites.
I mean, we've got plenty of space.
Yes, sir, we do. So.
Thank you.
But didn't we approve a plan, design or something for the expansion?
We have, we've put a plan out there. I'll be honest, in the time that I've been here, I don't know that it's come before the board, but it has been something at the staff level.
I'm getting something mixed up. Then I thought there was something else that you brought to us for out there for a design or something.
There's, there's a project in process right now for water, electrical and sewer upgrades to the current 97 sites. And then with that design, that company that's working on that plan right now is also looking at the potential for water, sewer and electrical for a potential 51 additional sites. Yes, sir. And that project is just underway with design. Moving on to some other fees at the park, we have many pavilions there at the park, a lot of small pavilions, several medium pavilions and then the large pavilion. And what we're proposing as far as some changes is currently the median pavilion, which will hold up to 60 guests, rents for $40 for a half a day, $50 for the whole day. Our proposal with the median pavilion would be to eliminate the half-day rental opportunity and just strictly offer full-day rentals because that is honestly what most of the people are using out there because it's, currently it's only $10 more to rent it for the entire day. So, that's what most of the people who are using the pavilions are doing. So, what we're proposing is to increase that fee to $60 for the whole day. Half-day rentals are sometimes problematic when we, on the rare occasion that we do have them because often groups will get there in the morning and then they'll light their charcoal and they would be ready to put their burgers on and their time's up and the next group is coming in. So, that's part of the reason why we're saying eliminating half-a-day rental opportunities. And then with the large pavilion, you know, basically the same thing is currently people, most people are paying the extra $30 to get the whole day rental. And so, we're proposing to increase that fee for whole-day rentals to $95. And that would also eliminate the potential for conflict if two groups, one's late and one's early showing up. So, and because that's the primary use is mostly whole day, we would just propose that we just eliminate the half-day opportunity. And these pavilions are rentable pavilions, but when they are not rented, they are still available on a first-come, first-served basis if they're not being rented for a specific activity. The other fee that we've proposed, and all of these fees have been vetted through the Blythe Island Regional Park Advisory Board and they unanimously supported bringing these forward for consideration to you. The overnight boat docking fee, currently there is not a fee that's in place. And while we don't have a large amount of boats that dock there overnight and while we really don't have a huge amount of space to even offer that as an opportunity, there are some that do stay there overnight. And so, we are proposing implementing a $7 a night overnight docking fee for groups that's come there. Now, people that are paying to stay in the campground, Dawn Waters, the park manager, and we've discussed that perhaps those people get some allowances, that they could be there maybe two nights in a row without paying a fee, but if they stay a third night, dock their boat for a third night because you wouldn't want a monthly rental campground, RV rental, to park their boat at the dock for 30 straight days. That would just be, that would be too intrusive to the general public trying to use the boat dock. But, but for, as a general rule, if they wanted to park their boat there for maybe overnight or two nights, maybe that would be a complimentary thing for them for staying at the campground. But if it became where they, they wanted to do it for a longer period of time, we could, we could implement that for the folks that are actually camping at the park. But, again, there's not a lot of space for overnight docking, but there are some boats that do do that some days on a Friday night or Saturday and we just thought, well, why not charge them a little bit to be there overnight? So, that's, that's one of our other recommendations.
Excuse me, do you have the lift fees? Have they been adjusted or are they the same?
They're the same and I believe they, I believe those were looked at about two years ago and, and so we're, we feel pretty comfortable with those fees. Some of these fees have not been looked at in about three years, but the hoist fees are still the same. It's $9 basic and then every foot, there's a different, there's a graduated fee.
That's the thing we spend most maintenance money on.
Well, yes, sir, we do. So, you're correct.
Lisa, you were just saying that if somebody is staying, using another part of the park, that you would give them the docking fee possibly free?
We could do it for maybe a two-night period or something like that and do something to work with the folks that are, that are guests at the campground as some kind of a little extra perk because they're paying the campground fee, but it wouldn't be for anything extended. And, and I apologize, I should probably have had a little more detail about how we would administer that. But I, we really feel like that's, that'd be a nice perk to somebody who's staying there for the month is to, is the month or for the week is to give them a night or two nights complimentary. But then after a certain period, it's like, look, you can't stay here the entire month. You've got to pay an extra fee too because it's not fair for the general public and other park users who come in and want to do it as well for you not to pay just because you're staying all month.
Right. I would suggest you make a definite policy because if you do it subjectively and, you know, you allow one person to stay one night and somebody else two nights and somebody finds out that, you know, it may create some problems.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Definitely. We want to establish something that's consistent and everybody knows what it is. It's transparent for sure, that it's, it's an open written policy.
My concern is, I understand you're talking about just people that are renting there, but once the word gets out that they can overnight park there if they're staying there at the campground. Well, if you have 20 people show up with boats that want to park at the dock, do we have enough dock space for 20 people to park their boats overnight for a week or three days?
Yeah.
See, that, that would be my concern. It's not, I understand what you're talking about and now you don't have anybody asking really to do that or very rare. But once the word gets out that you can go saltwater fishing if you bring your boat to the campground and park it at the dock whether you charge or not, you're liable to start seeing more and more people. Once the word gets out, starting, you advertise that, start showing up and then we're going to have an issue with, we don't have enough dock space. So, I would caution, usually, I understand why you're, you're asking it, but I would caution doing it just because of what could happen to us down the road when people start showing up with their 50 or 22-foot boat and they want to park it there for three nights.
Right.
And you get 10 people who want to do that also, we're in trouble.
Yes, sir. You're, you're right about that and maybe, you know, maybe that's something that we, if y'all aren't comfortable with it at this time, maybe we pull it, you know, potentially pull it off the table for discussion, I mean, for implementation in the near future. Vet this, vet it a little bit more, think about it and maybe come back to you guys if y'all aren't, if you think, and I agree with you. I think it definitely could become an issue. I don't think it's something we would advertise that we do, but just to have something in place to, to charge those folks that do take advantage of staying there overnight. Again, maybe this isn't, maybe we need to vet it more before we vote on it or think, have, you know, a decision tonight, but looking, looking forward to doing something in the future that's more policy.
But right now, people can, they can do it overnight, right? So, are we having a lot of people?
I would, I would say you may have two or three boats and most of them are people that are frequent visitors to the park. You know, they're local people that, that come out and they, they do a lot of boating. So, there's maybe two or three that me personally have seen, maybe on a Friday night and it's still there Saturday morning or Saturday night and it's still there Sunday morning. It, there's not a huge amount right now, but Commissioner Stanbaugh makes a great point that if the word gets out and $7 is not a lot to these folks, you know, they would, it could become, I guess, problematic. So, maybe that's something that we, you know, we can look at a little closer and not move forward to implement.
Right. So, he's saying because you're paying for it per night, then you could do it however many nights you want, but right now it's just free overnight?
It's, it's free. Yes, sir. There's, there's no fee for folks staying out there. I think probably the most, because we don't let them dock at the fishing pier, obviously. That's, that's off limits and they don't dock at the access pier. So, there's really, there's really only about four good spots that somebody could take up. So, the most revenue we would ever make on any given night would be about $28. So, it, it may not even be worth implementing some type of a system for it because it might be more problematic to manage and such than, you know, and if that's, if that's how you guys, you know, generally feel, we, I can certainly understand that.
Yeah, Lisa, I don't, I don't, I don't think we ought to be getting into the business of saying some folks, because maybe they rent a camp space, they can dock for free for a couple of nights and all that because it really is, it just opens up the door to someone coming back and saying, well, I didn't get treated like so-and-so got treated. Or, or, well, I, I don't, I don't rent an RV space, but I do this, this and this and maybe I should get a free night.
Right.
I, I just think we need to have it in, written down what it's going to be and if we vote on it and pass it and then that's what we do.
Okay.
If we have a lot of requests come in over time from RVers that think they ought to get a little special treatment, well, let's see if we can't figure out if we can do that in the future, but if we're not getting them, they're happy. I'm happy.
So, an all-or-nothing approach, which is fine. That's why we didn't really specify how it would be implemented. And really, and Dawn maybe can correct me if I'm wrong. I don't know that many of the, the monthly RV guests, I don't know that many of them actually bring their boats with them. They bring golf carts and cars, but I don't know that, maybe a handful.
Yeah, holidays are more problematic than any other, but like you said, we address it as needed, but I would.
Well, you know, my thinking is if they can afford to have an RV and they can afford to buy gas to get here and they can afford to pay $600 and whatever a month, they can probably afford to pay $7 to dock that damn boat that they can afford.
Right.
So, it just keeps it clean. It keeps a policy clean.
Yes, sir. And it is free to take the boating out the border.
And take staff out of, off the hook about deciding if we should or shouldn't, so.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for your comments on that. So, as I mentioned, the Blythe Island Board members unanimously approved proposing these charges, changes in fees at their meeting on August 9th. They also approved restricting those monthly rentals for, between those peaks, peak season of May to September. Our, some other reasons for proposing the record, the increase is we are working on a new agreement with Comcast for cable service at the park. And in this budget year from last year, we've already increased that budget by $6,000. And, you know, the new agreement with Comcast, once that's in place, there will be opportunities for them to increase the fees during that term of the contract. So, trying to recoup some of those, some of those costs that will be, that will be incurred and try to put that off to the folks that are actually using it. We're currently, as we mentioned, under contract for design services for future water, sewer and electrical upgrades. So, some of the increased revenue that we anticipate from the, the new fees will help to offset the expense. new fees will help to offset the expense of basically just improved service at the park, you know, better Wi-Fi, better cable service, better water, sewer, and electrical upgrades for, for the different sites. And again, the last increase at Blythe Island Regional Park for these fees was 2015, and we would propose that the new fees would become effective in January. The, the next item that we looked at, really, to, to us was kind of a no-brainer. The currently, we, current weekly fee of our summer camp program, which is very popular at Howard Coffin Park, is $45. That does not include the field trip fee, which, what we have been doing is, each week, after the, the parents pay their fee, we're charging them an additional fee that has been historically collected in a cash payment to the staff who holds it until the day of the field trip, and then the cash and the kids and everything goes on the field trip, and the field trip is paid for with the cash. It's just not good accounting practices, and so we had Vicki McClintock, the internal auditor with the county, did a complete audit of all our department operations back in the spring, and we, it was too late to adjust how we did things for summer of 2018, but her strong recommendation, which I totally agreed with, was just build the camp field trip fee into the cost of the camp. So, our average cost of field trips for this past summer was $10 a week, and so what we would propose is to increase the summer day camp weekly fee from $45 to $55 to include the field trip, and also, we would then, as the county, we would use the county's purchasing card system to pay for field trips, and just have a better trail and accounting of the fees that are going on, so. We recognize that any increase in fees for this program has the potential to be a hardship on some of the parents that, that participate, but it really is a matter of, you know, paying it now or paying it later, so it's, it's, it's kind of a neutral, neutral fee increase. And, and our budget, we've looked at our budget, there is a possibility we may need to, later on, as we get closer to the summer, and see how our entire budget's going, because it could, for fiscal year 2019, it'll have a potential effect of a $2,400 increase in expenses, but the revenue would be offsetting that expense, so there's a possibility, if we can't find the money in our own budget, which I think we can, that we may need to come back to you later and, and have an adjustment based on this, but I feel like we'll be able to find those funds. Hopefully, we can do some creative budgeting and be able to find those funds, but again, just a zero net effect, really, in the long run.
Quick question, what's all included in a field trip?
Well, there's, there's buses, there's drivers, we have to pay, the county, the county school system, we have an arrangement with them where we utilize their buses and their drivers to take us. We go places such as Summer Waves, Splash in the Borough, The Movie, Bowling Alley, places like that, and we take the, the kids. And so the fees do vary, but over, the average cost over this past summer for the field trips was about $80, so we broke it down and said $10 per week. And, and the good thing is, there may be a week where the field trip's $7 expense, but we're bringing in 10, but the next week, the expense could be $13, and we're bringing in 10, so it really is a, a zero effect at the, at the end of the day. And most of the people who participate in this program are participants for the entirety of the summer, so they sign up for all eight weeks, and so it, we feel like it'll balance out well for the families. The last fee that we, that we looked at was really, and, and it's a reduction, and y'all may be scratching your heads, why are we looking at a reduction? But what, what we're proposing is the, is, with your approval, is to establish a sunset pool admission fee, and currently, the fees for daily admission for Neptune Park is $8 per day, all day, doesn't matter if you come at noon, it doesn't matter if you come at 4 o'clock, it's $8 a person. Same with Howard Coffin and Selden Park, if you, whatever time of day you come, it's $3 per person, per day, for a daily admission. What we're proposing is, instead of charging the $8, you know, within two hours before closing, say if the pool closes at 6, so at 4 o'clock, the daily admission fee reduces from $8 at Neptune to $6 per person, and then at Howard Coffin, it reduces from $3 per person to $2 per person. We feel like, based on some of the comments that we've gotten from, from our local residents who work, that they'd love to come later in the day with their kids, but paying $8 when they, they only have maybe two hours or hour and a half to be there is, is strapping. I mean, if you've got a family, you know, say a mom or a dad with, with two kids, that's, that's $24. So, it's not a huge reduction, but you know, the, the perception of, I'm paying $24 versus I'm paying $18, it just kind of feels like they're getting a little something, a little discount for, you know, if they come in a little bit later, so we feel like this, the, the end result of, of the reduction, we don't think everybody's going to wait until 4 o'clock or, or 5 o'clock in the afternoon to come, you know, two hours before the pool closes, but we feel like it will benefit some of the local folks who would like to come at the, to the pool later in the afternoon after they've gotten off work with their kids, and feel like they're getting some extra little value or perk for, you know, for coming out, and, and hopefully, therefore, maybe increasing the revenues by more people coming, because they're not paying as much. So, that's the, that's kind of the mindset behind that. So, that's, you know, encouraging people to come, use the pool later in the day.
Lisa, what time do these pools close?
Neptune Park closes at 6, and Selden and Howard Coffin close about 5:30. We, we are looking, and I think there was some conversation a few years ago about not opening in evening hours because of the, there was an added expense, and there wasn't a lot of usage maybe in the evenings, and maybe some of it had to do possibly with, with the fees, I'm not sure, but we, we as staff have talked about, in better service to the community, that it would be nice if we could open up each pool one night a week, not the same night, but one different night a week, pick a night for each location, and maybe open until 7 o'clock some nights, or 7:30, and be able to serve some of our local folks by having an evening swim, maybe Neptune's night is Thursday, maybe Selden's is Wednesday, maybe Howard Coffin's is Tuesday, or something like that, and just, and be able to, to serve us, but right now, most of them, they, they close about 6, 5:30 or 6.
Well, I was just thinking, you know, from going from all day to allowing a two-hour window for folks to come and bring the kids, it's not much of a reduction. I'm just thinking the reduction ought to be a little more than that, or either the window they can come, maybe from two hours or three hours, but, I mean, the pools there, we're not building anything extra.
Yes, sir.
More people you use, more chemicals you kind of have in a pool, but...
Well, we do have to staff, to keep the pool at regular staffing levels, regardless of how many people are there.
Yeah, staffing, I mean, you know, labor's not changing, but I'm just thinking, you know, it just may accommodate more people, give them a three-hour window. I'm not so sure that that's, people are going to look at that reduction as much of a break for just two hours, so.
I appreciate it.
That's my thoughts.
Thank you, and, and part of the, the reason for the 6 is we were trying to stay just above the group rate, which is $5 for the group rate, so we were trying to stay above that as well, but we're, we're open to whatever suggestions and, and thoughts you guys have of how to implement that.
Lisa, what about, if you're going to do, you know, switch up the nights, could you have some kind of theme?
We could.
You know, so that folk would, they might decide to go, you know, because of the theme, you know, if it's, I don't know, a matinee or something like that, and just kind of have a...
Yes, sir.
A little celebration.
Yes, sir, we've talked about doing some pool parties like that, that maybe once a month, and so maybe, might not be every, if there, say if, if Neptune's open every Thursday, it wouldn't be every Thursday, but maybe the third Thursday of the month, or the, the third week of the month, we'd have some little party, or, or offset it, so that it's a party this week at this pool, next week it's at this pool, and, and kind of rotate it. I think that's a great idea, to do something fun, and have some giveaways, and make it really extra fun, family time.
Just get some sponsors to, to, you know, promote some of their products or something, I don't know, suntan lotion or something.
Yes, sir, thank you, that's a great idea.
I think we should look at it, throw a commissioner into pool night, what do you guys think?
So, so that, that pretty much concludes, you know, the conversation about the fees, and so we've got the recommended motion on the, on board, and we'd just appreciate y'all's, you know, your, appreciate your feedback on this, and we will move forward in whatever direction you guys feel is most appropriate.
All right, commissioners, any questions for staff? All right, this is a public hearing item, anyone wishing to speak in favor of the increase slash decrease in fees may come do so at this time. Seeing none, hearing none, anyone wishing to speak in opposition to the proposal may do so at this time. All right. Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to authorize Recreation Parks Department to increase certain fees and charges at Blythe Island Regional Park, and restrict monthly rentals from May through September, increase summer day camp weekly registration fee from $45 to $55, and add the sunset pool admission fee at Neptune Park, Brunswick Aquatic Center, Howard Coffin Park, and Selden Park, effective Jan, in January 2019.
Have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor of the proposal, recommended motion, signify by raising hand, that is unanimous, thank you very much. All right, public hearing item, alcoholic beverage license, consider the issues of 2018 alcoholic beverage license to Amrish Patel for OM Amrish LLC DBA Coastal Mart, 7552 Blythe Island Highway, Brunswick, Georgia. The license is to sell packaged malt beverages and wine not for consumption on premises of a convenience store, Sunday sales permitted. Amrish Patel licensee, Chief Powell.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, Board of Commissioners, the applicant meets all requirements as required by the code, and he's also present tonight, Mr. Patel. Thank you.
All right, any questions for Chief? All right, here's a public hearing item, anyone wishing to speak in favor of the application may come forward and do so at this time. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition to the application may do likewise. Seeing none, hearing none, commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the license.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor of the application signify by raising your right hand, thank you, that is unanimous, good luck, Mr. Patel.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve all items on consent agenda general business, with exception of any items any commissioner so wishes to pull.
Second. Have a motion and a second, anybody want to pull an item for discussion? Seeing heads going back and forth sideways, that means no, I guess, all right. We got a motion and a second, all those in favor of approval of consent agenda general business, signify by raising your right hand. That is unanimous, thank you. All right, item number eight, consider the appointment of one applicant to serve on the Special Purpose Local Option Sales Stack Splotch 2016 Citizens Oversight Committee to serve the unexpired term of Mary Harris. The term begins immediately and ends December 31st, 2021. Applications received from John Dow and Larry Mills, Commissioner Booker, this is your appointment.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I offer John Dow as my appointment for this Oversight Committee.
All right, Commissioner Booker's appointment is Mr. John Dow, all those in favor of Mr. Dow, signify by raising your right hand. That is unanimous, thank you very much. All right, we have executive session tonight, so if I could get a motion to go into executive session to discuss, for the discussion of pending or potential.
Pending, pending litigation.
Pending, pending litigation. So, we have a motion, a second, second, a motion and a second, discussion, all those in favor, signify, thank you. Thank you.
Not that I want it to be, but they just asked me, you know, I'm gonna just, I'm gonna just, I'm gonna listen. Yeah, yeah, yeah. This supposedly, this mediator is a county, county guy. Can I get a motion to come out of executive session?
Motion to come out of executive session.
Second and discussion, all those in favor signify by raising your right hand, it is unanimous, thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to follow the county attorney's recommendation for pending litigation.
Second.
Got a motion, a second and discussion, all those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Thank you, that is unanimous, motion adjourned.
Motion adjourned.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes from the executive session for the November 1st, 2018 meeting.
Okay, we've got a motion to approve the minutes. Got a second? And discussion, corrections, additions, all those in favor signify by raising your right hand.
They didn't get it in a timely manner, it shouldn't be done.